Ladies and gentlemen, all who observe, my name is Salam Choukka, I'm from our CCA. And I'll be moderating this session, which is both quite a bit special, but also a press conference for the media, as they are one of our first as it comes to the public, so who would love so much about also benefit from the discussion that have been having here. I would like to recognize the efforts of our community, setting up a community like this here, which I think is a big move forward in terms of our connecting both the policy, the research, and trying to handle the issue of air pollution. And I've been seated there, and I've been listening to all the discussions that have been going on, we've had discussions on TV, or generally have been trying to handle the different cases of those environmental issues that we have in the country, and it's why we've been having a lot of discussions, and air pollution has come up as well on this, with our challenges. So from the thing that I've heard is going on, as it's been applied even more literally, people asking if can we get a more sustainable solution when it comes to handling ambient air pollution? I've heard people talk about what we were about this problem, it's quite huge, everyone is worried, where we're going in the roads, our children, ourselves affecting our productivity, and I've also heard a lot about children, because these are some of the most vulnerable populations. The lifestyle, someone was talking about the new technologies that we have, and then being because of challenges that is causing air pollution today. And then I've also heard about the technologies, and which this requires spending on us both financially, but also in terms of handling the air pollution problem. So this is where we decided to put together a panel like this. To handle such questions, it's a huge problem, the damage estimate is thirty-one dollars in Uganda, is the number of people we lose every year towards air pollution. And how many are we in this room? That accounts for about eighty-five per day, and when you look at what you have in the room, that's about half the room, is what we lose every day in terms of air pollution for a blank ass case. So this is really a big challenge for us, and today in Suhu, we are in a way called the Air Quality Awareness Suite, and that's why we came out to say, let's put hands together, and sit in the same room, both policymakers, the medical doctors, the surgeons, the patients that are coming from the challenge of this problem, and sort of like discuss what we can do together. So this is how we're going to run the press conference, we will have our media, our representatives come to the fore, they'll have a session where they'll ask questions, and also have a session where the audience also, colleagues, will be allowed to ask some questions. So just to introduce, of all the issues I've talked about, we do have people that can address the questions to us, and I'm going to invite them in this order. So I was telling my very first meeting, they are our hosts today, I'll introduce to you Dr Bruce Jerega, who was the director, my very first in London Suite, Dr Bruce. We will have an opportunity to tell you what he's been doing in terms of air pollution and health, a bit more, and we also have Dr Lee Diambé, who's been working a lot with trying to like what issues are happening to our children. These are the six. We do have members, representatives from the United States. It's a big issue like we have, so we can't handle it simultaneously, we need a multi-stakeholder approach to handle the problem, and today we'll be back to invited, here is Dr Bruce, and we have the setup of disease control, Dr Erica, Dr Lisa Jenaelson, who has a great experience here about handling the problem, but that also we've been very deep in terms of management of the environment, and how we are all. So, and then I'll go to the board of the side, and this, I think this is where it also becomes more interesting. I would like to introduce the director of Kampala National Safety Authority, Engineer Andrew Chakka, who is our director at CCA, and he will tell us about what is necessary about ambient air pollution, of how many people scale in the world, yes, what are you doing? So the director, he has to be more about what we are doing. We also have a representative from Nema, who is the director of our regulatory compliance, who is Lisa White-Song, Ayazika. So ladies and gentlemen, I think we have pretty much a hundred percent of our power on the day, and we should be able to answer all of those questions that we have in terms of the issue of ambient air pollution. We're also being joined by the director of the environmental from CCA, who is just a senior vice chair, but also help me join the panel. So, I think I would like to, that we've been discussing all this today, and we want to hear from them a bit about, Dr Erica, tell us more about your research, leaving a lot of research, right, to the fact, air pollution and health of people, and how this is impacting people, trying to bring the leader, the point of work, and take away from the global picture. So tell us a bit more about your research, what are the issues, and I would beg to give more of the reasons as well, please, so that we can catch up in time. Yes, Dr Bruce?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. The man is, and our group, as you say, are the current article, that one who from the topic of air pollution. Of course, as many of the officials, we understand about the environment, because the environment is the number one major in our country. However, we are not experts in air pollution. So in twenty fourteen, I carried equipment to my suite from the US, carried here to beat, among others, air pollution in Kampala, eventually established that the air pollution in Kampala is five times beyond the allowable limits, the thousand and two hundred. Since then, we have conducted other studies, and one of the landmark studies that I talk about in the interest of time, is the impact of this ambient air pollution on children and population health, and we had a lot of that study. This study looked at children in danger, in where they are counted, in comparative study. As you can imagine, Kampala has higher air pollution than danger, and danger has higher magnetic air pollution than where they are counted. Performance, thus, the land function and land health of Kampala children, together with danger children, was much worse than the rural children in where they are counted. This was against a fact, that the urban children are taller, are healthier, and live better lives. Of course, it's a big argument, which we talked about many other things which explain this differences, however, we think that the difference is still to air pollution. And the defects of air pollution that we have studied, for the members who have attended this symposium, you've heard, that the prevalence of Asa in Uganda is higher than African and African by four percentage points. I showed this again, the African African is about seventy-seven, in Uganda, our studies have shown it is eleven percent. This is also higher than the rural average of around eight point five. Of course, there could be many other reasons, but the indoor air pollution which has been discussed, the ambient air pollution, is probably responsible for this. In this study survey, called the Urban National Asthma Survey, we actually showed that the prevalence of asthma in Kampala was a gain four percentage points than the rural prevalence. I cannot talk about COPD, the prevalence of COPD in Uganda, especially in the rural areas, is ten percent. This figure has not been found anywhere else, apart from one issue in Tanzania, where it's only seventeen percent. So, in a way, that's a one we have done about air pollution. However, maybe it is also managed as a decision to talk about the range of air defects of air pollution. The biggest organ affected by air pollution in the world are the lungs, for the reasons I've already explained, and I think I will suspect, we take too much air pollution for the environment. So diseases like asthma, lung cancer, COPD, OCA, cardiovascular disease, where they have strokes have been associated with air pollution, hypertension, and other cardiovascular diseases. But there are also other subtle things, which I need to point out in one moment, low bar rates, studies are available, which show that if children are born in these polluted environments, especially in homes, they are smaller, they can also have lower cognition, now this is very serious, their cognition, what is cognition, their intelligence can be lower. Right now, we have a fellow who's here in the room, who works for the National Order Isi, she's working in a second to see, to measure the effect of this air pollution on the cognition of children. There are also other things, like cataracts, as you mentioned, so that's the reason, last thing. This is a good, the events, developing cataracts is a whole area of things, but there are similar things. We have done studies which show that the change of air pollution, like about fifty percentage points, particularly, if you go to the hospital on that day, you will find people are needing aspirin, that has not been able to fight. Measure the air pollution, go to the hospital, when it's hard, what people are needing, if you look down, people have diabetes, and people have heart disease, they now are significantly higher. So, yeah, personally, I think that is all for that, thank you.
Thank you very much. So you've heard from the doctor, in terms of the different various aspects of doctor that are being affected, I would also move to Dr Bruce Jenaelson, he's been doing a research with the children, specifically, and he's been following them, right from where they go to school, where they stay, what are the conditions they're staying, and he's been trying to lead his study on air pollution. So, we also want to hear from him, with working with the children in schools, what happened for them, and give us a bit of, you know, what are these areas that we're in, are both the issues, are they supposed to take a very?
Thank you very much, Salam for that introduction. As the universe recognizes the problem of air pollution, our team came up with an initiative, and developed for a nature plan, which we got, first it's planted plants, and we released some reviews, and then we worked with the government to build our police from the west of South Carolina, the US, then in the west of Rwanda, in the west of Asavaba, as well as in the west of Nairobi, to come up with an initiative to monitor the air quality in Kampala, but also see the effect of this air pollution on children in Kampala. So, the main objective for this study was to compare the short-term effect of air pollution related to fluctuating, Bruce has said fluctuating, P M two point five. So, we set up ten monitors, ten schools, these samples are very specific, and student criteria, and we monitored for one year these schools, we also did spirometry for the children, one thousand and ten and a hundred children, and also we acquired, during some surveys within these households where the children come from, to be able to see the spectrum of exposure from the home to the school, and be able to make some comparisons. On another sub-study, which was doing, we're also monitoring the air quality using, for the government, for the bar, maybe it's, or a rooftop, and we, we are using that as reference, machine that we have, and they, they are so pretty, they, they, they're telling me, they're data from six thousand six hundred in Kampala, that's for this event, air pollution. So, we are now, this is a data analysis, and we are now cleaning and data analysis. Other countries, we are sharing equipment, so for the one year monitoring, the first equipment has moved to the east, to Nairobi, and so as we analyze the data. But what I want to say is that, from the monitoring that we see, we have established that the air quality in Kampala is actually not good, and on average, we, we, it's very bad for sensitive groups, and perhaps that's why Dr Bruce said, that when there is high pollution, we see about, there's a direct effect on the hospital admissions and death, meaning, for the rest, meaning, we need to do a lot more, and lot more, to improve the prospects, which are to reduce air pollution. So, we have air pollution is high, especially sensitive groups, and therefore the forcing, and of course, from the economic point of view, we lose a lot of person time in terms of school boy, in terms of productivity, etc. Then also in hospitals, we have, from the data that we have, from the city hospitals, we have established that there is a lot of, a lot of mobility, as well as mortality for the, for the smaller children, and get all the past diseases, when it starts from the age of thirty-five, onwards. So, if you are in my age range, you can guess my age, we are beginning to care, you know, think hard about how to deal with this problem. I stop there, thank you.
I think that, that Bruce points that our children have more at risk than any other groups in terms of our population, looking at the population percentages that we have, we have more than that, we can't stop them making it too productive, like they may lose a lot of the country. I would like to recognize the presence, presence of our director of, Dr Odeola Diawo, would you, on this? So Dr, Dr Diawo is our director of indoors and environment, he's a main coordinator for my profession, so we are really prepared to have a director who understands both sides, the environment and the air. So our next speaker, like we talked about, the audience, the holders coming together, and what are the solutions that we can take to handle this problem. Air pollution in terms of monitoring, it's, it's a new thing, we don't have any, any air pollution monitoring. Part of this problem has been mainly because of skills, of also, of course, in terms of acquiring technology through the monitoring, but also, it does not necessarily, the problem itself, where it's coming from, we will, we will, we will, we will, and one of our members, who has been the US department in Uganda, through the US mission, they have different initiatives, so they're, they're working on support, it's our objective of working on air pollution. And I would like to invite Dr Lisa Jenaelson, who is our director, CDC, and she's representing the US ambassador, to tell us a bit more, we've been working, we've been having to go in some, some of these areas, tell us a bit more about your mission, why you're presenting it, and how we need to, like, try to provide. Thank you.
Good afternoon, distinguished guests, colleagues, I'm very happy to be here today. Unfortunately, our ambassador, Deborah Rallan, is out of the country, but she's very passionate about this issue, and sorry that she can't be here today. And I think we're also very pleased to see this initiative, not only the conference this week, but also the Macquarie University Lung Institute, which I think will really provide important opportunity to Uganda. I'd like to commend the organization of this podium, that there are many consequences, and we've heard about a lot of those, even in the short time I've been here today, of air pollution, so I won't reiterate what our distinguished experts have already said. But I think importantly, we've also heard this morning, that it's not enough to know what the risk factors are, what the consequences are, but to really be committed to what we can do with that information, to help communities, to help people at risk, and I think that as partners, as researchers, as the media present here, it really should call us to action. This is a concerning situation, and I think we should think about what more we need to do. Very briefly, I think many of you know the Centers for Control and Prevention, our CDC is our public health agency, and many of our president in over seventy countries, many of you know that we're well-known for our organ infections, diseases, and emerging infections, but I have to tell you, in the United States, non-communicable diseases, including those related to water quality and environmental health, are very important problems, and CDC does a lot of work domestically on those issues. Unfortunately, that's so, in the developing countries, just partly because of funding. Here in Uganda, the US government invests around five hundred billion dollars a year on health, a lot of that is related to HIV, malaria, tuberculosis, and other infectious diseases, but I think that we're fortunate, that we've seen a lot of gains, particularly in HIV, in malaria, I know there was a lot of discussion yesterday on tuberculosis, we still need to make important gains there, but I think in future, here in Uganda, in any countries, we are going to be facing a high burden of non-communicable diseases. We know that their quality results in premature death and illness, and I won't go into the details that the colleagues here have talked about. In Uganda, I think the US embassy has really been taking the initiative to work with KCC, to work with many of the partners here, to do a number of different things. So, through the Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, the airman.gov, air quality monitoring program, we installed what we think may have been the first air quality monitor at the US embassy, and I can tell you, there are some people that check it on their phone every day, because we are concerned, but I think we're also interested in partnering with the stakeholders here to use that data in more innovative ways, such as what we've heard about from one of the earlier presenters. We also have a program called the International Visitor Leadership Program. Last year, we sent ten Ugandans to the United States to meet with the Environmental Protection Agency, local government regulatory bodies, to explore air pollution monitoring and control programs. And program participants included representatives from the Uganda Medical Association, from KCC's Pollution Control Task Force, and the National Environmental Management Authority, and some of you may be here in the room. And we're hoping that this action has empowered Uganda's environmental authorities to push for air quality environmental legislation, because I think there are individual things that can be done, there are things that can be done by the communities and councils, but that public health impact project requires bigger efforts and bigger issues. Finally, the Science Fellows Program, that the US mission fosters in collaboration with Macquarie University, Policy Council Authority, and relevant ministries, has been working to validate data, scanning testing sites, disseminating air quality, and educating doctors, and the public about the causes of the non-communicable matter and the resulting health hazards, in order to build awareness on the impacts here. And I think, again, many of the other in the room are really such, and are experts, who we look forward to working with. I think, just finally, closing, at CDC, our director, Dr Redfield, who was here twice in Uganda last year, has really made the point that good science makes good public health. So, I think we, it's great to hear about the different research initiatives and efforts that are underway to gather the magnitude of the problem, to look at innovative solutions, because I think that is what is really required, to inform public policies, and information that can result in, in important improvements. Finally, I think the US government, and all of its agencies, the US embassy, CDC, also the USAIP, which has been represented through BTV, but does work on environmental and other issues here in Uganda, are really committed, are concerned about the situation, but I think together we can make meaningful improvements. Thank you.
Okay, I hope you enjoyed, we are submitting to the policymakers as well, but just wanted to highlight that, as you've seen, that everyone has got a role, they are partners that we have here, to the open partners, and to support that they are capable to handle the situation that we are faced with, they're not just in Kampala, but also in other countries that are growing in here in Uganda. The program that the country has related, referred to, the one that tried some of our expert sources, the US, I'll say that, I want to, it, 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 I want to do the engineering, I'm all about everyone, and we have so many of them in the room already, we have five years of our latest communication expert, Nema, Engineer, so, a one that is one of the research tools, John Paul here, as we know, the thing that is really important, so, it's really important that also there's the skills that we require to handle this situation, to take different kind of skills on the table, to be able to handle the problem. So, in terms of policy, we have so, so, one country, both at national level, but also at the local, for example, Kampala, one country, as Kampala people, as CCA, so let's begin from, from the national level, and I would invite the director of Environmental Monitoring and Water Plan, Dr, this one, tell us a bit more, in terms of national level, how does air quality meeting the whole objective of, for example, achieving the N E P for Uganda that you said, how does this follow up there, and why? Because we get a lot of ideas from Nema, Nema is our parent, the manager of the community when it comes to our medical issues, so I would like to hear from you more about what Nema has been taking in terms of this, handling this problem.
Well, thank you, and, you all, this, well, as we know, Nema is a social, which are mandated, and this was for collaboration, coordination, and monitoring, and all that to the full of Paris, in Uganda, in the air pollution. Very first, that matter, we also aware that the constitutional requirement of Uganda gives a right to clean and dirty water, for instance, of Ghana, to avoid or manage the air pollution. Now, we do have national government policies, which are, we have a vision, uh, for management of air pollution, we have the National Government Act, which has just come out, the National Government Act, approved by the UK, and with twelve provisions for management of pollution and manage the air pollution. We are trying to regulate the process of improving air quality standards, we started this process, don't tell you, we were to play the fight, before the mother law, by parliament, and then it took by the president. So, now that the new mother law has been settled by the president, we are going to regulate the government air quality standards. Now, as I said, the air, air, air pollution is a rising problem, which can long after the law. We are presenting, we present as, I mentioned, the major sources of revolution, which include our industries, a number of them using sort of technologies, we have a lot of vehicles, you know, especially in our areas, with the rising conglational, useful, fancy, modern vehicle, air pollution, especially, we do have, it's not very expensive, it's not very area, we have two hundred meters, from one to eight rolls, but we are also, this is the presentation, in the air pollution. Now, the question is, what are we looking for? Our first, our first way to come to this, especially in the area of maybe industrial , where we are required, if the industry is, for instance, if there are like, to the air route, which are not limited, air quality, there are not limited standards that are required of environmental assessment, that is our first step in the direction, especially for stationary sources, the environmental assessment is kind of, and that is followed up by regular. Their medical assessment is kind of, and that is followed by regular policies and instructions. That becomes much easier in terms of regulation. Now, we come to issue of reform, this is really a challenge. We need to commend the government, set eight medical vehicles, which are important. And they started with the fifteen years, I think, eight years. But already, rising, as many as there is, they can't afford those vehicles. So the challenge is that we must break the balance. We need to make our people, or to make our cars, which means that we need to look for alternative sources also for planning for transport and people. Now, as we are in force, just need data. And this has been a very big challenge. In that, we found outside that, much as we are setting standards, we already set the standards which are impossible. And we need data, and we need to understand where are sources of pollution. Now, with support from, actually, from the UK, they have given us filters, which we are putting a number of resources in Kampala, so basically, first of all, and understand what is the area of exposure, where is the problem? We may not be able to tell that from this source, but trying to understand the general environment and the general exposure of pollution by any source too. Now, they said that we are putting this water end of class, drop the roads, industrial areas, and areas of higher commercial activity. But also, they, what do you call it, they are also getting some water, which we have installed at Nema House. Also trying to understand the general environment, the level of exposure. And that level has quite much of the inner background also. The USC also has given us some equipment for using air quality monitoring. But also, there is, we are, other partners as well, come from what the US ambassador, recently came back to us to say, we should play a bit of this, maybe one of them, see potential areas of support. Therefore, I would say, there is a law which has given provisions for air quality. However, the forces may be literally in terms of, first of all, we need to acquire data. We need skill, especially, being able to use this equipment. But also, also learn how to enforce it, okay? But also, on the other hand, for those facilities where a medical assessment has been done, that for people, actually, they will comply. Because one of the dangers is that people don't want to provide a drop. And that becomes quite a big challenge. So as far as, we are going from national level, that's what we have done so far.
Yes, thank you very much, Erica. As you have told, Erica, that Nema has been a lot, but Nema are not only this guy alone. Nema is very hard to support, work together, and to control and manage the situation. Because interestingly, an individual who are from the industry, who are also contributors. We all can be a bit of transport, a part of the madatuts vehicles, of which some of them are worth services. And they are contributing very big to the air pollution in the city. So we need to work with Nema, we need a supporter, a danger platform where we work together to try to handle the situation. So I would from the national level, would like to also hear from our host, Kampala. This is Kampala, because it is very difficult, ours today. Understand from a national level, how we get to support Nema. I don't agree with quite a lot of the public Nema, in enforcement, in different areas. And I would take our pity, it's one of that. But I think for KCCTA, as you've had our vision, to make Kampala a vibrant, attractive city. And we look at those three words, there is no way Kampala is going to be vibrant to, sort of like, compete on the economy with people who are sick. We cannot have a attractive city where people can come, today where it's also all prepared to walk away with a grant, I think it's okay. But we also like to come to Kampala, experience the beauty of the city. And we can have that, that polluted environment. And that is the danger of it, which affects the different aspects of society, the economy, the social, the environment. So I would like, I would just refer to Erica, tell us a bit more in terms of what KCCTA is taking. If we accept support against air pollution in Kampala, okay?
Thank you, moderator. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. A lot has been said, so I'm trying not to repeat, but I would say, but first and foremost, every time a failure must be organized, it is the most young. Talk about it, it's very good and efficient. Air pollution is a native, very potent matter in the city. And also because, most of that is invisible and also others. So it's very hard for people to imagine that they are moving to an environment that is polluted, where they can't see anything, they can't touch anything. So that's why we need to create this awareness. So that people have to understand that where you are moving could be dangerous, okay? Though you don't see anything. Now, as you all know, Kampala, a city, is a major industry of Kampala city in Uganda. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of activity in a small area, whether it's a small area. Kampala measures one eighty nine square kilometers. Now, compared to the rest of the country, that is very small. But within this area, you have more than half of the vehicles in the country applying roads to Kampala and the nearby areas. We have an aging vehicle fleet that fuels used in the country, not the best. The road network, we have 2,110 kilometers, which only thirty percent stomach. Now that already tells you what is happening in this area of Kampala. So we've already carried out a science survey on air quality in the country, and in Kampala. And as you can imagine, it has already gone as, we weigh about a recommended finish, a typically matter, again, two point five, and also nitrogen levels. So we need to really work very hard on these issues and make sure that we clean our air. By the way, two point five microns is something very small. I could compare, let's say, to one hair, a piece of hair is a hundred microns, micrometers. Now, this is much smaller than that, meaning that it's much more dangerous. And you can't insert the same into your system, and go to your lungs, and you're not noticing, and you're not sure what is going to happen. But if you were to do it, it's going to have a lot of problems, the overall. A lot of research has been done in the area of air quality, the rest of the world. What we've done, we've done much, is the only beginning, forty five, the problem, see of the problem, and also create awareness. But I'm aware that political models have been made, made changes to predict, for example, how vehicles are going to emit, depending on what mode they operate in. A vehicle operating at four speeds will emit different amounts than a vehicle high, high on, or his extent, so in a traffic jam. So these models are already available. There are also models to predict how much pollution is going to be around. They work on the streets, depending on how much pollution you have. Areas near traffic junctions are likely to have more pollution because vehicles spend more time in these junctions. Now, obviously, this is related to the amount of delay the vehicle will have in the junction, meaning that congestion, congestion is going to be a factor in predicting pollution. So in this area, I'm really calling upon the government, especially to the Minister of Sports and Transport, Nema, to make the constitution mandatory, so that at this inspection point, you can be able to catch the emission characteristics of the vehicles that you have in Uganda. And the law is not enough, because one might have a car of ten years, which is emitting less than one or five years, simply because it is well maintained. So if we don't maintain our vehicles, is there any way to reflect in the vehicles of pollution on the roads? Now, what is KCCTA doing? We are doing quite a number of things. We are first of all, developing an air quality monitoring system. And this we are doing with our partners, Purdue University and USAID. We are planning to install twenty five monitoring stations in the five divisions of Kampala. Institution will be five. The distribution, we shall inform you later on where we will exactly unfold them. But as previous presenter, brother, someone asked from the audience, these are not only going to be international schools, they are also going to be other local businesses. We want to develop technical purpose, the work stuff, through support from the EU Economic Agency in Kampala, to monitor and use that data to plan purposes. KCCTA is undertaking a large infrastructure project for all already. We are doing this, support from Kampala, World Bank, African Development Bank, to pave as many roads as possible in the city. So far, we have worked on four hundred and ten kilometers of roads in the past eight years of this existence. And we have to do more to ensure that we eliminate dust from our environment. We also want to make sure that people who pave their frontages, there are so many businesses in the city and homes that have nasty frontages. And the law obligates them to pave these frontages, to reduce from the dust nuisance. And we shall be soon ready to implement this campaign to tell people to pave their frontages, to reduce from the dust nuisance. Banning of also waste to make this very much. And we are working through private concession networks to make sure that every home in the city signs up with a company to collect waste from the home. We are currently collecting about one thousand one hundred tons of waste in the city. But this is still around only fifty percent of waste generated in the city. In the air fronts, we are trying to promote non-motorized transport. And this basically means walking and cycling in the city. Walking and cycling not introducing any pollutants in the environment. And walking, those are very healthy, can help with controlling non-communicable diseases. We are doing the first pilot of NMT corridor from Mengo, around what you call about along a river road, and home street, heading out into the road. And if this pilot is successful, we want to scale it up and introduce NMT corridors in other parts of the city. This means that we will be under restriction, and we shall provide assistance for walking and people cycling, it would definitely have an effect on the pollution in the city. We are also working ahead with this very streets in the central business district of Kampala. Some streets are going to be now pedestrian, and we shall only allow access in at certain hours of the day or at night, for vehicles delivering supplies to the shops, and also for vehicles that belong to people that stay and goes to different locations. So this too is going to have an effect on the vehicles of pollution. KCCTA is making effort to enforce that tobacco ban, which for any smoking in public spaces in Kampala, to reduce the disease burden caused by smokers, caused by smoking in the public. And in cooperation with the public of change, that is from the US people in Rwanda, we have started awareness raising campaigns, names, signs, or micro. With the aim of raising awareness on air pollution in schools, since children have a most valuable role in the effects of air pollution. A lesson plan has been planned, has been developed by teachers to talk about air pollution with children and adults. We are going to increase the coverage of green in the city through planting of trees. And green, because air pollution is under preparation by the Authority Council, and will be allowed, they will be allowed very soon to protect trees, wetlands, and any green that is in the city. As we know, plants absorb on the outside, and they can help to be an environmental. We are engaging the industry in Kampala, to sense their immune to air pollution resulting from their operations. And also discuss with them the actions and options that they have to mitigate air pollution in the city. So it's really very big issue, Kampala, two cities living in this, and a very potent matter. And we are sparing all the folks, to ensure that we improve the environment in Kampala. I've been in several cities around the world. I went to a city in China, where I was planning to have a walk on the streets. And the moment we walked out of the building, they gave us those masks. And I wonder why that put on those masks? So we don't want to reach those levels, who want to address this problem before it goes too far. I was also informed in that country that people can buy fresh air, fresh air items. You find some of those, you can buy it to buy some fresh air for the family. So we need, it can be that bad, so we need to address it before it gets to the worst. What are the future plans? KCCTA will hold an air quality management plan to guide the maintenance of interventions that are going to reduce pollution in the city. We also want to scale up and more responsibilities. And we also want to introduce higher capacity public transport. We are currently using mattresses predominantly, which only carry fifteen passengers. And right now, they are also in those conditions in the city. So if we introduce higher capacity means of transport, it means that we are reducing the number of engines on our roads that are emitting pollutants. An example is the railway. We have recently started cooperation of a single railway transport to the center part of the city. It carries loads of now and then. It is really a small vehicle at the moment, but it carries over two thousand passengers every day. And what does this do by it to? It means that you are, who are going in one hundred and forty trips of mattresses on the roads with this small vehicle. So if we expand this to the western side, and also southern area, where the rail is located, it means that we're going to take off so many people from the roads to take this non-polluting one, for this polluting one. It uses diesel, but at least it carries more people than, than the mattresses. We also want to bring back mass transport in the city. There are so many group technologies, and buses used for interest, but still carry a lot more people. Of course, there are so many socially broken barriers in this, because it will affect the current operators, which is their social livelihood. Therefore, we have to do it carefully, and make them, make them part of the council. So all this is one time, yes. But we need to look at the government very seriously. Because many times, you will see these kinds of people, but if they don't see what it costs them, they will not take any action. We can talk about ailments we are having in hospitals, and now as our patients. But if we don't put it in monetary terms, it still don't have any effect on the decision makers. They need to understand that if we don't do it, this is the cost that we're making. And then decisions can be taken to introduce public transport. And then decisions can be taken to introduce some of the transport. All over the world, we're talking about sustainable modes of transport. But very few companies have taken that decision, introduced these sustainable ones, because the message has not gone very clear on what is the cost of not having it. Chancellor, if you introduce it, you may be unlikely to introduce some city also to help it to operate like the bus service or the train service. And this is seen as the cost of government because we are not anticipating the other cost that is being incurred by not having such a amount of transport. We completed the disability study of air transport in Kampala that currently now funding is implemented. We are awaiting the national air quality regulations from NEMA. We are hopeful that they are going to move very fast so that we can enforce air quality regulations. I'm sure people who are working on our roads and move behind, encouraging them to take care of the smoke and nothing happens to this guy. There are so many of them on our roads and we need to take action very quickly. HCCA is also planning to symbolize a number of junctions in the city. Most of our junctions are uncontrolled, meaning that you might have so very long queues at junctions, a lot of congestion and pollution. So we are going to upgrade thirty-two junctions starting this year and also construct a good job center at HCCA. And this will allow us to remotely manage the traffic junctions and be able to observe where there is congestion and give those routes more great time, minimize traffic congestion in the city. Of course, actually, within air in the city is not a collective effort. It's also in the city. We have to work with many stakeholders, probably private, public partners, and NGOs. And these are going to be instruments of increasing awareness to support this cause. There has to be a decision in place to make sure that we can enforce air quality limits. Talking along is not going to achieve change. We have to modify this movement and be able to talk to the policymakers, higher up in government, set aside the forces that is having to the economy. So all these things we are going to do, what we have started now is just the beginning. We're going to continue to work with you and global partners, make sure that we are shaped to lean on air in our city. And let me once again thank you, global partners, the EU, the US, the UK, mapping for change and are very grateful for the financial support that they have provided to HCCA towards combating air pollution in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christian Perry, for the wonderful speech. I would like to invite Prof. Daniel O'Neil. Prof. Daniel O'Neil is in charge of the public health facilities that we have in Kampala, the public health department. And we'd like to hear from him as well in terms of how prepared we are, in terms of how many cases, what are we seeing among the health facilities, in terms of those issues that are coming forward, affecting people in Kampala. But also he has been key in terms of implementing the tobacco control act from the HCCA perspective. So we'd also like to hear from him about what are those initiatives that are being taken in terms of implementing the tobacco control act, but also trying to look at our health facilities and how to prevent their harmful issues. Yes.
Thank you, Saddam. It's quite difficult to speak after your post. I'll just sort it. About six years ago, we started, six, seven years ago, started seeing something interesting in our number reports. When you look at our data from the DHI, S.O.S.C. And this was in terms of mobility. The number one, as you said, was the mobility in Kampala was the just aspect of managing. But the number two was what interested us. And this was cough, flu, pneumonia. And when you look at our statistics, it speaks of persisting. I know that we command the fast forward, fast forward, but they're asking ourselves questions, what is happening in Kampala that we cannot see? And when we put the decade with air pollution and you look at the labels, they are making us to be able to get your answer. So looking at it from the point of the health facility itself, not be rooted because it's more the prevention approach than seeing that how very deadly the pandemic possibly has severe as far as, you take care of that term. But make sure that the next term doesn't get affected to the air pollution. And here is where we need to look at the health system that moves away from the typical, typical best approach and see how we can then go more deeper. I was looking at the figures, I was trying to compare the estimates to HIV. What's the estimated estimate to air pollution? They are actually the same. And for HIV in twenty seventeen, the estimate is between twenty-six thousand to actually thirty-four, lower than that. For air pollution, we are thirty-one. So shilling for shilling, if you're to put your shilling where they are actually having the same number of deaths. Since our partners are here, air pollution interventions are to be from another one and offer. And they are causing those number of deaths. Maybe we need to rethink and say where do we put our money? And this is something that is going to affect wherever you are, to come to your office, it is going to come to your sitting room. You never notice your house, but when you walk out of a job, it's actually okay to them. So I mean, the preparation and looking at it in terms of the facility versus intervention is something that we need to move away. And the intervention that the ED has cleared and laid down, but also integrating those interventions into mainstream. If us maybe make simple, exactly actually doing, would actually be the one for. HCCA is, when we are looking at industrial pollution and we are looking at cleaner production technologies, you're actually contributing something to the air pollution that is there. And here is where HCCA and air pollution specialists will put the hate towards saying how we can deal with that. The other issue of where you're integrating, if we are saying that we are going to add a speeded air filter in the room that I thought we'd actually talk about. They want smoke, food, eating, the vehicles and vehicles, those are the water holders. And what is the effect of the water holders of our air parties? Any of you who has been at the line? I think the first major thing is the result of water holders that are parked. When people are lying to them, they need, then they have to follow. Each of them, the engines are running. They are actually one stroke. Where you reach the engine point with the fuel and the binding is incomplete. Now those labels, oh, what they're doing for us is. Some process, I don't know if you are going to do this, but I think this is the element that they have to tackle and see how we can be able to improve. The, of course, the other issue that I've touched with is how we handle it in terms of the facility. One of the things we have been saying is, if I go to a primary school and I'm talking about the activities, no, sorry, I'm talking about HPP bus station, I'm targeting children in P five. What if I gave the same message about air pollution? Go tell the children who are going to modify the habits that you actually are so used to and take as normal. How many of us have cigarettes at home? All of us. And two standards are wrong there. Is there a time in the nineteen hundreds we have space of art? In our, in our world? Maybe that is the time where all ages are cigarettes at home. And those are the things we actually have. And we are being saying, yes, here is, we can also create. But that transition from the habit of what we use for life, how we like, absolutely presentation of it ourselves. But these interventions should build into the public health system, build into the public health approach, integrate them into the mainstream interventions that we are actually moving to. The ED of the powers, so increased management. It's how many of us actually have license collectors at home? Or do we call the branch and the village to come and collect? And you don't care where it gets out? It actually results in another one is more, more inflation. Now, those are the things that are coming back more frequently. So while the speakers are saying it begins with us, it begins with our habits. Air pollution is not something that is actually good, it's mandate. They'll tell you the first cases of air pollution, not during the pandemic, certainly the coal mine, certainly the production of coal, certainly the industrialization, all these are mandate and it's modify our behavior. The numbers I'm talking about of thirty-one thousand are only going to increase. In two years, in two years, they are going to say, oh, people are dying due to air pollution in Uganda, and actually due to HIV. Because now they seem to be giving. HIV is dropping, air pollution is coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think we're going to have some questions. I'm sure that audience, plus the media, would like to also hear from our distinguished partners here. We believe there is a wrong, a wrong. For the greater discussion, apologies for the provocation, but we also, okay. So let's just go into the questions outside in the media. Do we have questions from the media?
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Let me attempt to give the answers to these very many questions HCCA. That's not as expected. Mass transport. Yes, the quality of engines is part of our this project. We intend to bring high-quality engines, maybe Euro four. But of course, there are challenges in this thing that a few leaders in the country may not be able to provide the quality of fuel that that engine takes. But the negotiations of this. And regarding the vehicles, these vehicles going to China, we are in the process of renewing our fleet. Originally, they are planned to privatize all of our storage in the city. But it has proved not to be possible because there are no private companies that are able to take on this task completely. So we have to remain in the collective transporters, like from markets and restaurants and the very poor areas. Because traditionally, as we want to collect the area that we are able to pay, we are in the process of renewing our fleet. Someone asked about section of Namfor, we wrote, just after the turn off from Sabro and one year, we have a challenge of land in the city. People have become so indigenous that even if a road that we exist in, should we attempt to wear the things from it? Then we make a in-fund land dispute. But we are trying to resolve it. Even if that road is an access to someone's home, you'd rather have it grow for some time and take a distance money from you. So we have many challenges. Non-motorized transport in the city, yes, we are aware of this. It is a very hostile environment and that is where there are very few safe roads. So if it is the one, it must be a segregated pathway. And whenever I want to do it, it should be segregated from the rest of the journey. Our latest, the director of the environment, answered some of my questions. Especially to know where the places emitting power smells, like the woods and the rivers. Those are the easy ones. And then from magnetic pollution, we've been waiting about it very many times. The trouble with this is that the people have set the standards actually the ones in the industry. So they will never take, talk ill about their business. Like mobile phones, they will always say that it's below the, you know, the danger threshold, so you can use it for as long as you want. And then they don't have the resources they have. So some of them, you know. Spaces provided for pedestrians, which are ensure that they are not in very expensive cars. We are currently working on a strict vending ordinance in the city to make sure that it is very accurate, where the street vending is allowed. This point is carried before the authority council and we are going to invent it. And there's certain spaces for street vending. And we should not allow anyone to invent, go waste, or waste. Collaboration with NEMA. Yes, there is collaboration with NEMA in that NEMA approves the PIAE is also very common. After all of them, that is where the PIAE, they have to approve by NEMA. Regarding vehicles, I think that still through by NEMA was to limit the level of age in the country. But I believe that coming on board with all this data, all this quality target, these introductions are going to be tight. They are going to have to be more sophisticated than it is now. Let me request the director of public health to make some notes to wish. Maybe before we come to Ushaka, a smelly place is after hours in Kampala.
Thank you indeed. About the fourth man, definitely really the fourth man from the bench, and that shows that this, this integration of all the risk of something that is natural, they are not formal and annual form, and has been due to the brush me of the area. So this definitely is leading to something that is preferring happening there. For those who are, those who are in Syria, those escaped around Syria sometime due to our being true, and those are aimed due to the variation of the bodies of the day. So that is due to what is happening when that is integrated. And if you know where the area was, we have a team that can go there and investigate and find out. This is again the means of industries, pollution. Would be very grateful if you'd not program us if you tell us those industries that are actually polluted. Because they may be afraid, but this is going to bite you. It's going to hurt your name, and it's also going to hurt the people around you. So people, if you knew where they are, have you done system? We are not going to necessarily analyze them, but assist them, assist them to actually be able to have better technologies. About, about, about from, when you look at, the HCCA's planning is ending this year. We actually wanted to have us out of the city. That tablet was built in nineteen thirty-five. In nineteen thirty-five, that was outside the presence of the city. So many years later, we don't think it's a place, it's a right, it's a rightness for it to be. And we are living in a ninety-five, a living casting where we can't be able to shift. And the best practices now is to bring processes into the city. You do not have, you do not need another to be close to where you are actually settling your meat. You do not have, you do not need another to be close to where you are actually sitting, you are in. About TV in the city, Kampala does about fifteen percent of the notifications in the country. So in terms of area, the biggest load of TV is in Kampala, that is the TV. For anywhere, we also have the most cases of large crowds of TV in the city. I think we are also about three hundred or something about that number. I understand this and been going on to see what is the effect of air pollution and TV, especially indoor. Does it increase on the transmission? And so, so these are things that as a city, and you will know because of the information of this crowding, so TV is trying to Kampala. We know that we have fresh air, but in there are more than six hours. We have some more details and they're waiting under NEMA and post about population. These are things we have been working in partnership with definitively with. So I think those are the questions most important.
Thank you very much. We're here for a match, but we'll give back to the director for NEMA. You want some questions to ask me?
Thank you. There was a question on the sidelines, it was the host of the forum, Vale. Well, this facility is for me, it's a person, for the environment management. And we are pretty sure it will not end. One thing I need to request, I would open up a video of this. We have a video of Vale, Ira, Barrara and Nasi, friendly, majesty, of course, of those that things happen. For the greater stage, there was a problem in the valley, in the port of Kampala, okay? But we have, we have a video of this. If there is an issue that we have to work on. Our values are equal to the environmental management in this country, the standard management. So NEMA doesn't work at all. Every district does an environmental officer who are supposed to intervene their issues of environmental management. We talked about the issue of research on the issue we have seen on the road, workers. Now, as I said, NEMA doesn't work at all. NEMA works in the number of other agencies, in the area of reconstruction. They have been run through some works, a few agencies, and in terms of workers protection, the issues of those workers are supposed to be workers and protected. The contract for us, we are also nice of gender, they are just a woman, it's just a person, people are women. But I suppose of a lot of this. The nineteen ninety five law did give NEMA enough powers to take particular measures against other public agencies who overdo their work. But the new rule now has given NEMA powers. If we refuse to work, NEMA can sanction this. So I believe with these measures, we hope to see progress in terms of environmental management. You mentioned the middle of the super park, you have been Vale, as your way company has been trying to take essential resources beyond number of where we are here. There's a mobile company, they're just moving the super parks everywhere. So there's other new countries also creating, so that is the middle of the park. And environmental criticism has carried out and it is all they just cut out of me now. Also, I would be required, so what is important now is for us to look regularly. Of course, the IDKs talked about our operation and we are members of Kampala Corporation as well. And this has posed a lot of problems in terms of monitoring. And innovation that was in Kampala, we started with the aim of air pollution, water pollution, weather. We are now expanding into air pollution. And therefore, we believe this operation, here we include innovation that applies in Kampala. The issue of the issue, as I mentioned, um, government within one number, number of years, vehicles reported. But the IDK SCA mentioned, I think this will be only if motor vehicles are tested and is monitored. These motor vehicle testing centers which are being set up is more volatile. I think that's the only way to get to count this, that every year or at every point, every vehicle must go through a mandatory protest. And probably through that, there is a fight, probably in that way, to be able to run issues of motor vehicle emission. On Luigi, Luigi, last year we had a massive pollution of people on Luigi. But you know, this is another thing which requires a lot of our surveillance and enforcement. And we cannot be here where, and even if we need people coming, but we are planning round another round because there are more areas that will come back. But we are planning round another round of pollution. And we must know that as we reach, most of this is not in China, okay? Because you find that part of our pollination, air pollution, that's all the responsibility. We will have to hit with loss, you know that, okay? So and yes, we are aware that environmental protection, they will, they will, how was it? Environmental protection, but sometimes find that there are issues. So once again, just as I remember, it will be several responsible, it's not for NEMA, okay? NEMA can't lose our, those, whatever it was. The issue of air, I think that is the best sense of humanity. So I know that, of course, this is a very difficult space here. And it's something, it's really, really, really hard for a person. But the percentage of Kampala pollution.
I agree to close the session. Thank you very much for your address and I hope.